Here.
Board President Nubia Duval-Wilson.
Here.
Board Member Regina Eckert.
Here.
Board Member Bill Gifford. Board Member Bimal Kapadia.
Here.
Board Member Will Meyer.
Here.
Board Member Shane Asaki Gabel. All right.
May I please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at two thirty PM on January third, twenty twenty five. That said, notice was sent via email to Maplewood and South Orange Township clerks and the editors of the news records Star Ledger, Tap into Soma, and The Village Green. I'd now like to motion to enter into executive session at six thirty six PM to discuss attorney-client matters, personnel, and hip reporting. The length of the executive session is estimated to be seventy five minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Callahan, all in favor. Okay, let's go.
Good evening, everyone. We are now back in regular session. Do we have any students here tonight? Are there any students, like CHS students? Or, yes, okay. Would you like to do, oh well, sorry. I should have specified, students for public speaks. Are you planning to do public, okay, please come up. Public speaks does not start yet, but we always allow our students to speak first. You can come sit, do you mind letting our students sit down and have a public speaks? Thank you. Yeah, you have three, sorry, three minutes, please.
And if you can turn on your microphone there, I think there's a button down in there. There you go, I think you're hot mic.
Good evening, Board of Superintendent Bing and Board of Ed members. My name is Liam Maris, Rising Junior, and point guard of the CHS boys' basketball team. My name is Liam Maris, Rising Junior, and point guard of the CHS boys' basketball team. To start off, I would like to say, growing up in a predominantly Jewish community, I've come to understand how important mutual respect and cultural understanding truly are. As someone who isn't Jewish, but has many Jewish friends, I want to make it absolutely clear, antisemitism has no place in MAPSO or anywhere else. We all have a shared responsibilities to stand up against hate and to support one another. Now, I'd like to talk about Kyrie Irving and what he's offering to do for our student athletes. Yes, he made a mistake years ago with comments that were hurtful and unacceptable. That should never be ignored or excused, but he has publicly apologized, taken accountability, and now is in a position to give back to the very communities that helped raise him. He's offered to provide new gear and equipment for both the boys' and girls' basketball teams, something that could truly change the game for our student athletes. The reality is, our high school does not fund new gear, updated equipment, or overall development of these sports teams. Everything is funded through constant fundraising, booster efforts, and out-of-pocket contributions from families and volunteers. That's a heavy burden to carry year after year. Kyrie's support would significantly relieve that pressure and ensure that every student, regardless of financial background, can access the same high-quality gear, feel like a part of the team, and represent our school with pride. I know that in a few weeks, my Jewish friends across MAPSO will be welcoming in the new Jewish New Year, a time of renewal and repentance. What better way to acknowledge one's errors than to give them the opportunity to right their wrongs through good deeds? Seems counterintuitive to deny someone that opportunity while we acknowledge their past mistakes. This is more than just a donation. It's a chance to bring equity, morale, and opportunity into our athletic programs, which are a critical part of many students' schools' experience. Now, the fact that the district doesn't financially support these programs in any meaningful way is a serious issue, and it deserves its own focused discussion. But tonight, I simply ask that we recognize the good that can come from this moment and remain open to a thoughtful, community-driven conversation about what's best for us, the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, what was your name again? What was your name again? Liam, thank you so much, Liam.
Appreciate you.
Were there any other students here tonight for public speaks? Just want to make sure before we move on. Okay, great. So next, we are going to approve the board minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the board minutes from July 23rd, 2025, special board meeting and minutes from July 24th of 2025, executive session and regular board meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Brown, all in favor? Great, board minutes have been approved. And next, we will have the superintendent's update.
Real quick, we do want to take a moment of silence in honor of the shooting in Minneapolis at the Annunciation Church and those victims and families who lost loved ones and had to endure a horrific tragedy, so if you don't mind. Thank you, appreciate you, our hearts and prayers go out to the families and friends.
Superintendent Bing, do we, and also Board President Nubian, do we want to swear in our new student board members prior?
Yeah. Take it over, Mr. Moody. We've got some new folks representing CHS. For those of you who are new to these meetings, we usually have two high school representatives that are at our board meetings. Our last two graduated and are on to college or university. And now we're swearing in our two new ones for the 25, 26 school year. I'm going to ask both to step up to Mr. Moody, so we could swear you both in.
Welcome, please come over and perhaps stand right here. Actually, here and here, ladies first. So, welcome. We have, as our new student board member, we have the required oath of school board members. What I'm going to do is give you this copy, and then I will ask that you repeat after me. So, I state your name.
I, Scarlett Strogov.
Actually, if you would, there. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, we'll sign the forms.
Thank you so much.
Pleasure. Welcome, Scarlett. And now we will also welcome Penn Shapiro. And now, Penn will be doing the same thing. I will read off and you'll state, you know, repeat after me, okay? The required oath for school board members. I state your name.
I, Penn Yul Shapiro.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you, Senator.
Now, you can take, if you can take this and Scarlett, if you could take this, and then you guys can sign them and I'll witness them after, okay? Thanks.
All right, welcome everybody tonight. Just real quick reminder, memo correspondence and phone call went out in regards to South Orange Middle School. As you know, they were the last school to be done for capital, five-year capital project. They will be ready to open September 2nd to receive students and staff. However, our staff haven't, has not been able to get in early like they usually do. Some got in today, but there are a majority that did not get in. So we want to allow our staff to really get all their classes and everything set. So we're doing early dismissal on that Tuesday and Wednesday, coming up only for South Orange Maplewood School District, District, South Orange. South Orange Middle School, again, early dismissal only for South Orange Middle School on Tuesday and Wednesday. Transportation stays the same. If you're out, you will still be transported by bus. But again, only South Orange Middle School on Tuesday and Wednesday, early dismissal, just so our teachers can do, get their stuff ready. They were the last school now to get the upgraded fire alarm system, a new safety vestibule, and also a new clean air HVAC system. That pretty much finishes off our five-year project. There are a couple little things I think at CHS that still need to be done. We're almost finished, but the major construction is now done. Also, very quickly, August 27th, I want to do a big shout out, and they're going to be doing a presentation soon, to our curriculum and instruction folks who just put on a wonderful professional development day. This is the first year that we used a district-wide professional development committee with, with teachers, with administrators, and they really came up with a great concept of ed camp. We had great attendance, some really great reviews and responses. So, big shout out to them for organizing the event and big shout out to everybody who participated and also who facilitated the workshops. Also, congratulations to ASCA or Administration Association. They ratified their contract on August 27th, all right? 26th? So I just wanted to give them a big shout out. It was great to work with them collaboratively. Columbia High School will have a new drop-off and pickup procedure developed by Maplewood Township. Hey Keith, can you just pop that up real quick? As you know, Maplewood Township did pass a bike lanes that will go in effect in the spring of 2026. However, they are working on better ways to drop off and pick up students in front of Columbia High School. For those of you, for those of you who have participated in drop off or pickup, it is a bit convoluted, so we're going to try this new six-to-eight week strategy that the town and the district put together. It is on the website, you have some road closures, you have some new one-ways. So we ask that you do visit the website just to take a look, so you can see the new drop-off and pickup procedure. CHS schedules are out, just so everybody knows. As you recall, we may have a little hiccup last year with Columbia High School schedules, but we are on, on task this year. Also, big shout out to extended school year staff. Just wonderful work this year, all around. Big extra shout out to Melissa Butler, who hosted a lot of students and just, again, her, the teachers, everyone. Wonderful job with ESOI this year. Big thanks and big props.
Okay, Mr. Moody, do you have any updates for us before we go into the presentations?
Well, yes, I'll just elaborate a little bit from a construction standpoint on how we've brought things to completion with, with work at South Orange Middle School and several other schools. I'll just cover a few points. So at Seth Boyden School, final payment was approved, stair repairs were completed, and we're just looking for architect approval. The stair repair was, it was not accepted, and then a new repair was issued, or was requested, but that's also now completed and waited approval, awaiting approval. Tuscan School, final payment was approved, the work is complete there at Tuscan School. Marshall School, the sprinkler flow switch will be wired and programmed into the fire alarm panel next week. Work has been coordinated, buildings and grounds, we're waiting for final inspection. And a change order for roof work is scheduled to begin on July 16th, and that's now completed. Montro School work, at Montro School is also now completed. As the superintendent mentioned, there's continuing work at the Columbia High School. PA system is underway, as well as an emergency responder system. IT connection's underway. There's renovation of the existing guidance area that, that was in fact completed, and there's awaiting a little bit of furniture to be delivered. Fire alarm in the A Wing is tested, completed and inspected. Doored hardware replacement continues. D-Wing new doors, we added a new scope of work, and that was ordered. Installation of permanent cores, 98% completed in those doors. Cores for the new guidance area are received and are scheduled to be installed. The new locker area pricing is submitted by the contractor, but that has yet to begin work. PA clock and speaker over the summer were definitely completed as well, and it's in function this week. Now, South Orange Middle, the superintendent mentioned that work was continuing and underway there for HVA systems and alarm systems. The building keying was reviewed and the school and the work orders were released. They received the door cores, and that installation is underway. Plumbing in the new bathrooms is completed, framing inspections completed, duct work installed, tile and fixtures installed. So now at South Orange Middle, essentially we're powering up the VUVs, which are the HVAC system, and they're completing out work. There are crews in place over the next several days to complete out the cleaning in preparation for the opening of school. And as the superintendent mentioned, that's going to make four half-days on the first two days for that school. That's pretty much it. Thanks. Received the email, Columbia High School gym will be ready on Friday, 9/12, and Maplewood Middle School gym will be ready for use on September 15th. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. When you talked about the locker room bid, I assume CHS girls, is there any sort of timeline? I think right before Tom departed, there was this kind of soft, like, completion by, I think it was early next year? Are we still on track for that?
We're on track and moving forward. The work is going to begin, or not begin, but sort of get into full swing during the fall.
Okay.
So I don't believe that there's been any impact to that target.
Got it.
So we're trying to move forward on that, it's a priority.
And then, I don't know who wants to say, but just with the school year starting just on Tuesday, is there anything you want to just say about transportation?
Bus passes have gone out, I believe they went out Monday night, Tuesday. We're in a good place with buses. We did, we did hire, I think, we did let everybody know, a new director of transportation, who has just hit the ground running and done a wonderful job. So we're looking forward to a fresh start this year. Same as last year, I'll be riding some routes. I think Mr. Moody also volunteered to ride some routes as well. I didn't know that. No, I would only add to that, that, you know, we'll be doing some review of the ridership to be certain that we're addressing all of our capacity utilization requirements and optimizing the routes. So, you know, we're aware of perhaps challenges that were experienced in the prior year, but we are, we've been very preemptive, and the, the actual drive-throughs of the routes have been, have, you know, proceeded very well over the course of this week. So we're optimistic and we'll be, we'll be monitoring. Yeah, I think the two largest issues we have addressed, that was capacity of buses not being filled and also length of some of the routes. So we did a lot of work around that this summer, so we're hoping we'll see quite an improvement around that. We still have some work to do, we know that, but I think we've done a pretty nice job for the new school year.
Okay, great, thank you so much for those updates. Next, we will have our NJGPA results for spring 2025. Ms. Bodnar and Ms. Carrera, please come up. They're going to be sitting, they need, yeah, they're, they're going to be sitting there with the mic. Thank you so much. You got the keys to success over there, I see, huh?
It's to my office. I realized when I paid down, I was like, oh, hey, my key's with me. Good evening, everyone, how are you? I hope you had a wonderful summer and raring and ready to go for the new school year. We're very excited about it. Dr. Correa and I are here to present our NJGPA data.
Okay. Do I have to point it at the computer behind me?
Oh, thank you, yes, we're going to just press the button, we're not going to get fancy. Okay. Thanks, Keith. Okay, so, as you know, our NJGPA overview, the state graduation proficiency test. Okay, so, as you know, our NJGPA overview, the state graduation proficiency test, I'm going to, is administered to all of our 11th grade pupils and any of our 11th or 12th grade pupils who have not, students who have not previously, who have previously failed to demonstrate mastery on the NJGPA. NJGPA is designed to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and the ELLA component is aligned to the Grade 10 standards, and the math component is aligned to Algebra I and Geometry standards. Okay, on the left, we have our data for all students. This is our 11th and 12th graders. We only had nine 12th graders retaking the test this spring. So we did add a chart with all of our 11th and 9th graders. You can see the number of students over the past three years and also see the data compared to the state, but compared year to year for our students. On the right-hand side, we decided to really zero in on our 11th graders because they really are the ones who are mostly taking that assessment. And you can see where the green is who's passed and the red is who did not this first time around. And then we break down into subgroups. As we always are looking at our subgroups and ensuring that we are meeting their needs, in these graphs, you can see that we need to continue to focus in, especially in our math, with our Black and Hispanic students. Also, there is a discrepancy in our ELLA, but our math tends to stand out a little bit, a little bit more. Okay, some noteworthy information that we have based on the data are, in ELLA, our Language Arts students have demonstrated exceptional skills, achieving a proficiency of 90.6, surpassing our state average of 80.7. In math, our students have achieved a proficiency rate of 78.2. Once again, we have exceeded the state average, which stands at 58%. And also, we are continuing to see a trend upwards in our math, which is great. Over the last two years, we've increased 6.7%. So we're excited about that. Obviously, we still have a lot of work to do in our math, and, which is exactly why we made those decisions two years ago, add and do a lot of work in our K5 math, and then this year we're working with our 6'7". We should soon, very soon, start to see the, reap the benefits of that work that we're doing at K8. Okay. So there are some automatic measures that go into place when a student does not pass with a 725 on either subject side. First of all, we, the CHS administration has already determined which students did not pass, and we did already, they already took the NJGPA assessment over the summer. This is something different that we haven't done in the past. We've offered it in the summer, so we're waiting on those scores. We could see a bunch of kids already passing and meeting those graduation requirements. There are currently 55 students that are, who did not pass the first round. Second, we, students can also pass through a score on their SAT and ACT scores, so we are in the process right now of looking at each individual student, finding out who, weeding out students who made the graduation requirement through SATs and ACTs. And then finally, if we need to, our seniors, they, there is a third pathway that they will be scheduled to take an additional course focusing on a portfolio. And this is great for, especially for students who don't test as well. It really looks at all of their work, which is, you know, we have, there are people who definitely don't test as well and need a different form of assessment. And I can say from last year, just a little bit of information, we have to give a shout out to our CHS staff, all 100% of our students passed the graduation requirement from last year. So we anticipate that that's going to happen again this year. We really don't think, there's no reason for it not to, but, so I just want to give them a little bit of shout out because they really focused in and honed in on our kids who needed the support and help and got them to make that requirement. So what are we doing? Some intervention strategies that we're putting in place and that we will continue to refine as the year begins, or continues. We have, we are analyzing our NJGPA data to identify any trends and areas where students are struggling. We will continue and really focus in our NJTSS implementation process. We have been working on it for the past two years and we're getting better at it and really targeting where our students are struggling. We will also do that in collaboration with our Rutgers Report recommendations under the curriculum and instruction. We will use, we have been building automatic interventions using data, so as we see a student who is struggling in a certain area, we've put in place automatic interventions that the students will participate in. We are going to continue to work on them, refine them, and create more automatic interventions as the year goes through. As you know, we've purchased adaptive learning technologies, iXcel, iReady, that has provided personalized learning experiences and practice opportunities to meet our students where they are. It has been giving us data that has been incredible for us to make plans, to make programming, to really drive into what the students' needs are on an individual basis. Brings us to need-driven decision-making, so resources reach appropriate students. Again, I can't explain how, just in five years, the difference, even less than that, the difference between five years ago and now, how we have dramatically changed our data-driven decision-making. It has been the best thing that we have had, is really had this adaptive data and to make really good decisions. And I think we're going to really start seeing the benefits of that also. We are working closely with Department of Special Service and the Office of Assistant Superintendent to support populations, even during, Mr. Bing talked about our professional development day yesterday. Our special ed department, there were some teachers and there were some, and the supervisors worked specifically with all teachers to look at IEPs, to understand them, and to implement different strategies that they can use in the classroom. And also, our ML, Dr. Robles and one of our Columbia High School, Katie Simpson, one of our teachers, they work together to also work with our gen ed population, our teachers to help support ML students. So we're really trying to tap into all areas to make sure that our teachers feel most prepared to support students, and that will continue to happen. And?
A shout out to Mr. Bing presented at our PD.
That's right. Four sessions.
Four sessions for teachers.
And he got good feedback, too. But, yes, it was energized yesterday. So we are open to any questions you may have.
And just so you know, there is, in the presentation, there's full summary, so you will have a full development of all the data.
Yes. This is pieces.
For your viewing.
Great, thank you so much for the abridged version, being very mindful of time.
Keep it short and sweet, to the point.
I think we have some questions. I saw Will's hand first and then Deidra, and then, if the question wasn't asked, then I'll go last or next.
So thank you so much for this presentation. Really helped, I love seeing some of the Linkit integrations there.
Yes.
It's hopefully easier to pull all of this data together now. I know that this is a shortened presentation, I appreciate that in light of everything we're doing and not getting out at midnight, hopefully. I know that in prior years, we've had report-outs looking at the data by gender, as well as by economic opportunity, and by IEP. I'm wondering specifically what you can tell us about that IEP data year-over-year and how we're looking right now.
A lot of our IEP students often do the second pathway or third pathway specifically to NJGPA, so we work very closely with the case managers. We don't want to bring any kind of stress to our students with IEP, so we make sure that they review, whenever a student that has an IEP for special ed, they definitely sit with their student to make sure that it's not a testing thing, that they're comfortable testing, or should they do a portfolio, which really explains who they are as a whole student rather than just a test in a school. So we definitely work with Department of Education, and last year, I have to say, the Department of Special Services was so great at really helping our students create those portfolios and look at other avenues. So we do work with them, that's the first thing we do. Same thing with our ML population, we need to make sure we work with Dr. Robles and his department to make sure that our students that need that extra support in the classroom, the 10th grade standards, whether it be Algebra I, is it a language issue, is it something? So the minute we see those special, the different populations, we work with those departments to zero in on the students. It was about 50 this year, it was about roughly 90, I think Mr. Sanchez says, last year, overall. And it could include students that are coming in from other districts, right? So we worked really hard at just making sure that we're analyzing, not just if they passed or failed, but more like what do they need as an individual to be graduation-ready? Because that's more important than just a test score.
Right. Do you know, this year versus prior years, whether the student took the NJGPA or had that portfolio assessment, have we seen any changes up, down, as far as the level of readiness right now?
For our special populations?
Right.
Yes, so you can go in and just so you know, review everything, but yes, there is a trajectory of still achievement gaps that are clear with students with IEP specifically and 504s, but the 504 students have a higher percentage of passing, but there is, there is still an achievement gap that we need to zero in. And that's why it's more, I hate to just look at it as a number, because it's more about, is the test right for this student? Not all students test well.
And one thing I wanted to even mention, one thing, states getting right finally is we're going to an adaptive NJSLA, which will help, I think, also in these assessments. It's, we're finally catching up to what we should be doing at a state level. So I think that data will also help us with our special populations to really zero in and see where, what standards, where we can support and how we can sport. So, you know, the NJSLA gave us, and same thing with the NJGPA, they give us data, but if we can drive down and zero in more on each individual student, which is what the adaptive's going to do, we're going to be able to help a whole lot more students with the data that we're collecting.
So for those of you who may not know, the state test needs to be standardized, so whatever the grade level was, that's what they were tested at. Now it's going to give us information adaptively, are they at a third-grade reading level, fourth-grade reading level? So it's going to be able to give us more robust individual language that we can really work with the students. So we already have moved in that direction with iXcel, with iReady, so this is just going to help us correlate who the student is as an individual learner. And I'm excited for that, for the NJTSS process and as well as just classroom instruction, good tier-one instruction.
And they'll be used to this type of assessment, right? They do it iXcel three times a year, but they're working on it all along, but the assessment piece that we do is three times a year, so hopefully, the type of assessment will feel very familiar to them, and we can, we can see some more success.
The confidence, I think, will be greater too, because as the student is scoring, if they're scoring below grade level, the test starts to shift to a lower grade-level assessment. If they're succeeding, it'll shift to a greater level assessment. So the student, sometimes imagine being in a test and not understanding any of the language, and the fear, you probably start to give up and just say, you know what, I already failed, who cares, right? Where this might be like, oh, I could do this one, and then it'll lower it if they got it wrong, and then they'll start to feel maybe success. So it's interesting to see the dynamic and what that's going to show us, but I'm excited to really, I think that it'll help the students with their confidence level as well.
Moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Deidra?
Thank you so much for this, and, yeah, it's nice to see that we are making progress, you know? That's wonderful. I was just thinking about, you know, the middle school math and this natural now fifth-grade checkpoint that we have, now that the district is kind of looking across these criteria and making recommendations as to which kids should take accelerated math or not. And I can't help but think, you know, these disparities that we're seeing in 11th grade, they start so much earlier.
Right.
Right? So I think it's a perfect opportunity for our district, if we are seeing, you know, in order for the district to recommend a kid taking accelerated math in sixth grade, they have to meet four criteria. And so do we have proportional representation of our students from the various groups that meet those four criteria? And if not, let's dig into deeper, why not? And I think, on the flip side, how many kids are only meeting one criteria by fifth grade?
Right.
Right? And what do the proportions look like there in terms of race or socioeconomic status or special services? So I think, you know, on top of just providing more parents' information in fifth grade, which I think is, parents have appreciated, I think that's also going to be a natural point for us to look back and say, what can we do earlier to help these kids?
Absolutely. And I think it's going to be really interesting to see how putting this time into, and really focusing in on our math, which we hadn't done in so long, how it's going to reflect in the recommendations and in, you know, these types of scores. I mean, they say it takes five years to see change, that our third graders now, who are going into third grade, will have had the new math program when they get up to the middle school, so just a few more years. So I really think that when we have that group come in to sixth grade, we'll see some shifts all around, and it's really exciting because we know, you can't help but improve, right? It's a very, the program is incredible, it is, the teachers are really liking it. I think, I think we'll start to really reap the benefits of the hard work everybody's putting into. Our teachers are really working hard. They had a full day professional development yesterday at the middle school, so I think we're going to really start to see some shifts going.
I definitely want to add that although we have loved sharing the information with the parents, the data's more for us to make instructional decisions, so absolutely are we looking at the demographics, where they are on grade levels. And honestly, that's more important to us. We love to share with parents where they're at and where their child is, because that's always important. But we're, this is data-driven decision-making, and that's what's been so amazing, how we look at students holistically and not just one test or one thing.
Yeah.
So yes, it's giving us a plethora of data, and that's, it's exciting to us, because I think we can really zero in on that instruction because of the data that we have now.
And it allows us to progress monitor.
You'll see that.
Stop doing what's not working and continue doing what we're doing and find other interventions that support the work that we need to do.
Yes, thank you.
Everyone has said a lot of what I was going to say or ask, but I'll just add on two things. One is, to all the things that you just said about the tracking and all of the improvements that have been made, which is really exciting and all the data, I think one of the things we talked about in our retreat was how we are going to continue to track progress over the year, not just looking at these tests, right, that we have to do, but looking at what's going on in the classroom throughout the year. And it gives us opportunities for you to come back and share some of that data in the lower years, K through eight, which I'm excited for. And then also, being able to track year-over-year will be nice, since you said that there's this at least five-year trajectory, looking in the next three years, that'll be great. In this, for this test, NJGPA, definitely since 2023, our Black and Hispanic students, those numbers have increased of not passing, but it's great to hear that they actually did, you know, at the end of the day, they did, it just was this test that showed that they were struggling. And so I think, in addition, having, when this is reviewed again next year, it'd be nice to see year-over-year, a year-over-year slide, just so we can see from that perspective, but realizing that it's not the end-all, be-all.
That's right, that's right. And with using Linkit, they give, they have years' worth of data for us now, so we are now making, really seeing trends, seeing where we're struggling, where we might need to put some more interventions in place. We're sharing that with principals and with teachers. This year, teachers will be, will be trained in Linkit. It was, year one was administrators and really honing in on it, and now our teachers will be trained and be able to jump in and look at their students, and over the course of, I think it's three years now, they have data for three years. So it's exciting.
Absolutely. I mean, and just working in collaboration, like seeing the professional development from the Department of Special Services, providing for all teachers and not just special education, usually we work like in silos, but we've been working so hard together as a team in central office that they were excited to present to all teachers. Our ML department, to present to all teachers in all content areas, not just math and ELLA. So it's just really exciting what this data has given us to really shift how we do education. And one of the things that I love about our specific district is that we're not just remedying the top, we're starting a systematic change from the beginning. So I think it will take years, but I do feel that we're going to see the benefits of this dedication from the Board of Education supporting all our efforts, but also the teachers really coming in and helping us with that.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Yeah, next we will have our superintendent give a presentation on our long-range facilities plan.
All good, Keith?
All good.
Thank you, Mr. Bonds. Just wanted to take a little time to present our long-range facility plan that we will be submitting to the state. There we go. Real quick, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the purpose of a, of a district's long-range facility plan. It is a five-year plan that the district must put together and develop and submit to the state in regards to its facilities and its needs. For us, it's an interesting time because we just, as I noted, finished a five-year capital project and now we're going into a bonding project for our fields and really having a chance to take a look at our buildings closely. So to that end, the Long Range Facility Planning Committee has developed a master plan for the district for the next five years, as noted. I want to really point out district-wide themes or focuses. One, improving safety and accessibility. Two, modernizing infrastructure. Three, classrooms and technology. Four, student health and wellness. And also grounds improvement. Real quick on the process, for us, it was an information collection stage for quite some time. We did administrator interviews. We interviewed representation from ASCA and Sumea. Board of Education interviews, senior leadership team interviews, a very robust community survey, student interviews, school tours, review of facility records, review of current building conditions by our architect, and subsequent meetings with architects and engineers. This was a very comprehensive process that's been going on for the last year. If you've attended any of our board meetings, you are bound to hear the word LRFP at least five times in those meetings. That's due to the amount of work we've been doing. I also want to give a quick shout out to our Facilities and Finance and Technology Committee that really did a yeoman's job in regards to developing this and pushing this through. Information evaluation, so we then prioritize district necessities, share with the Finance and Facilities Committee, review the budget implications of proposed solutions, update and report conclusions to the board and community. Step three, approvals and submission, present to the board, which is tonight, enter an approved plan into state website for submission to NJDOE, receive the long-range facility plan acceptance and approval. In essence, if you can picture an Excel sheet, it is about a hundred and twenty-five page, pages worth of Excel sheets, really noting everything that needs to be done with facilities. There were intricate walkthroughs throughout the district in all our buildings. We are lucky enough to have the same architect for now, going on six years, maybe seven years, they started this capital project. So they are quite familiar with our buildings and our grounds, which was a great advantage to us, and knew our buildings quite well. So we were very happy with the results when they went through the buildings, when we interviewed folks, everything really seemed to correlate quite well. We then would bring that back to committee and really prioritize. What I do want to point out, because I've had this conversation with a few folks, it is important to note that our projects are not binding to the district. The approval of this plan does not mean we're going to launch into a multimillion-dollar project or two over the next year or so. It does not impact taxes or debt, really unless to the degree that the state would agree to provide debt service for the proposed projects. But this acceptance by the board and then submission to the state does not trigger money being spent right away. We have a new Director of Facilities. That individual still has to review our, our long-range facility plan. So you might see some adjustments along the five-year cycle. It has been exhaustive process. We, we looked at everything, talked to hundreds of folks, including our students. We do have confidence that this LRFP is up to date. So tonight, hopefully the board will adopt that. Again, we want to point out, the adoption of the long-range facility plan does not trigger any costs, does not trigger the start of any projects. Our partner, I did want to point out, Spies architecture group, they've been wonderful to collaborate with. If you've attended our budget presentations, which I know you do and did, I don't want to call anybody out, we had packed houses, thousands of people on virtual, you are familiar with these slides. I will sum them up for the purpose of the long-range facility plan. You're seeing enrollment numbers, I'll totals it out on this slide. So if you take a overview of our district facilities, you will see our buildings on the left, that is Clinton Elementary, Columbia High School, Delia Bolden Elementary, Maplewood Middle School, South Orange Middle School, Marshall Elementary, Montrose Pre-K, Seth Boydin Elementary, South Mountain Elementary, the South Mountain Annex, and also Tuscan Elementary. You will see the square footage associated with each. You'll also see the current enrollment as noted by the state. Obviously, our largest building and also our largest population, Columbia High School add close to 2,000 students. As noted, and we talked about this in the budget, you'll see the bars representing our Now, for those who aren't familiar, we use the DOE standard cohort survival enrollment projection. We also had a demographic study done for the district. That study, one of the formulas used in that study correlated almost to the T with the Department of Education standard cohort survival enrollment projection, extremely close, I think it was off by one student. So it's quite reliable. You know, the enrollment projection is provided by the NJDOE every budget season for the use in the district's LRFP. One projection a year, three to five years in the future, should be entered as a proposed enrollment in the enrollment section of our LRFP, which we already have done. Quick note, you will see this, this is what's presented to us on the New Jersey Department of Education software every budget year. This is what we have, this is what projects our student cohort. It projects it over, we have ten years' worth of data on this sheet, projecting all the way, I believe, till 2031? To 2030. So it's, it's great data for us. Obviously, this could change, but it's been pretty reliable if we look at our past data. So as recommended by the state, we rely on this standard cohort survival enrollment projection. So enrollment projection, as noted, it goes all the way out to 2930. If you take a look at our total numbers, you're looking at 2526, currently at about close to 3,000. 2627 goes up slightly, 2728, again increases slightly, 2829, another slight increase, and another slight increase in 2930. If you're looking at grades six through eight, you'll see a little difference than grades K through five. For six through eight, 2526, you see starting at 1483. Then you will see, again, small declines in our middle grade population, ending us up at around 1,315 students in the year 202930. And if we're looking at our projected enrollment for grades nine through 12, our high school years, this year starting at about 1,896. If we're looking out to 202930, you're seeing a drop of a little more than 100 students that dropping us down to around 1,766. Again, this does not take into consideration new builds. Obviously, it's a five-year projection. If you're using this cohort and enrollment projection, it does not take into consideration new, new builds in, in either town. Also, overall enrollment projection, as noted, we are currently at around 6347. If we're projecting out to 2930, the projection number is 6167. This is also part of our budget presentation. You'll see our revenue slide, this is already on our website. Also, our expenditure slide, we had a very robust budget season. We facilitated, I believe, around close to five to five public presentations, including board presentations.
Yeah, I would say about five, but then when you include the Budget Advisory Council.
Then throwing on top of that, the Budget Advisory Council, which was a
Town hall meetings.
First initiative for us this year, was really a community advisory committee that we really just brainstormed with around, around the budget. It was very helpful and fruitful for our work. Our bond issuance, as you know, the district has some very old buildings, including the oldest high school in the state, which is Columbia. These are the bond issuances over the last few years. A lot of this has to do with roofing work, also corridor and hallway work, and also some small additions over the years as well. If you were a part of our budget presentations, you all know that the district will be undergoing a partnership with the state around an energy savings plan, looking to do an energy audit for all of our schools and seeing where we could utilize solar panels to lower energy costs as well as LED lighting. So that work will start this year and hopefully, construction will start in 2627, next school Here are diagrams of our elementaries. The green sections are really the conclusion of our additions to our buildings. So the last big capital project added 12 classrooms, it removed four portable classrooms. If you're familiar with the district, a decade ago, you will know portable classrooms were distributed throughout. The additions to the buildings helped remove those portable classrooms. Delia Bolden added 10 classrooms. Marshall Elementary added 16 and removed two portable classrooms. Seth Boydin had six classrooms, replaced two classrooms and removed six portable classrooms. South Mountain Elementary added nine classrooms. South Mountain Annex added four classrooms. Our Tuscan Elementary added four classrooms and removed four portable classrooms. Columbia High School added seven classrooms. Our next big bond project going out this year will be our Ritzer and Auditorium Project. Our last few board meetings have been, spent a lot of time talking about this. I did want to put a quick summary on here. The board will be going out for a new resolution over the next couple of months. We'll then be passing that resolution on to the Board of School Estimates for their vote. Hopefully, that'll be a positive vote and then we, it will go on to process and I'll show you the timeline in a second. But I did want to review what the Ritzer Auditorium Project encompasses. If you look at the Ritzer Field Phase One, you're looking at synthetic turf, multipurpose field for soccer, lacrosse, and softball. You're also looking at a separate synthetic turf softball field at a total of about six and a half million dollars. Soft costs, we always put in for allowances, that totaled out to close to a million. When we go to the auditorium part of the project, South Orange Middle School Phase One, stage rigging, the main auditorium, around $583,000. Stage rigging in the auxiliary auditorium, close to $100,000. Also, lighting in that auditorium, around $70,000. You will note that Columbia High School is not part of this, that we took that out of our operating funds. We are in a wonderful spot right now, I'm going to knock on wood, with Columbia High School. Our rigging crew has just been great, they've been installing the rigging all summer, expect it to be done within two weeks. Mr. Bonds will then jump on the electrical side of the house and start installing our electric work that he's been working with a, another action committee around making sure that the lighting system really reflects the real world and what the kids are going to see when, when they go out into the field. We're then looking at Maplewood Middle School Phase One, which is stage rigging again, around $218,000. If you look at the entire cost of the bond and project, it is $8,377,701. We're very excited about the project. If you've attended any of our last board meetings, you've heard many of our students also just really exuberant about the possibility of having a first-class athletic complex for our kids right outside our high school. So we're very excited. If you look at our timeline for the Ritzer Auditorium Project, our schematic design has been completed. And again, this is all after it's been approved. Site investigation takes about six weeks, October to November 2025. Additional survey week, survey work around three weeks. Stormwater test pits, four weeks to schedule field work and receive lab results. Preliminary environmental assessment, limited site investigation, six weeks, six to eight weeks. Design development around three months, November through January. Also permitting, three months, for permitting portion current, three months, January to March 2026. Maplewood Planning Board capital review, earliest feasible would be around December 9th or their January meetings, that's to be determined. And again, part of our project is we want to bring in as many collaborators as possible. So we're working with the Maplewood Planning Board around a review of our plans. Timeline also continued here, South Orange Planning Board capital review, DOE submit application with Maplewood Planning Board submission, Essex County Planning Board around one month, Hudson Essex Pasaic Soil Conservation District about two months, NJDEP, they filed online, construction documents about one month, which takes it out to March 2026. Bidding for about a month, it'll be open, takes it to April 2026. The award and contracting will be in May 2026. Construction, we're looking at about six months. So a targeted notice to proceed, June 2026. And we're hoping for substantial completion by December 2026. So our commitment, and I can speak for the board and our SLT, is to break ground sometime around June or July. And we're, we're extremely excited about that. As noted previously, the long-range facility plan is really just a, a large amount of Excel sheets. This is an example of one. You will see on the right side, we prioritize by year one to two, three to four, and five I do want to note and just highlight some of the priorities so we have a better understanding of what we're talking about when we, when we mention priorities. So if we're taking Clinton Elementary for an example, you're going to see some themes throughout our schools. And accessibility is a big one. Due to the age of our schools, there's a lack of accessibility for our kids and also our adults with disabilities. So that's going to require a significant investment through all our schools. What you'll also see is ceiling replacement and classroom hallway work. Most of that will be ceiling replacement, painting, and also floor work amongst all our schools. Lighting replacement in the classrooms and hallways, as noted, we're hoping to get some of that bonded, some of that money from the state through our energy savings plan. Also, we have to do some minor things in Clinton such as enclosed gas meter fencing and also student areas, you want to put some fencing around there for safety purposes. Again, some examples of what's going on in Clinton, but I do want to point out, you'll see drainage grading throughout most of our schools. If you've gone to our properties, you've noted that our exterior grounds need a lot of work. So that's a big theme through all our schools. You'll see additional playgrounds in many of our elementaries, also a lot of concrete work, that's a common theme. And also, a big project for all of our schools is either the restoration or the complete renovation of our bathrooms. And I think our two Columbia High School students can attest to the work needed in our bathrooms, and that's not only at Columbia High School, that's throughout the district. Also, our roofing is an issue in many of our, our schools, so you'll see that as a theme as well, and window replacements. Another example are Columbia High School. These real, this slide is really just highlighting some of the big ticket items such as ceiling replacements in hallways, our graining and our drainage, lighting replacements, our plumbing infrastructure, especially at Columbia High School, being it's the oldest high school in the state, that is a necessity. Also, some others, restroom renovation, as I noted. And also, we only have two schools at this point, as I recall, which is Maplewood Middle School and also Columbia High School, that does not have a safety vestibule. For those who aren't familiar with safety vestibules, it enables guests to walk in to a smaller room before they can get into the main building infrastructure. So all our schools currently have that. Psalms is getting it currently and that will be ready for September 2nd. Our last two schools left are Columbia High School and Maplewood Middle School. Delia Bolden, some examples, as noted, you'll also see through our elementaries, the auditorium projects. And again, those center around rigging and lighting. Those are our focus, so the stages can be used. We haven't even gone into, but you will see it on the long-range facility plan online, the finishing parts of this, like the flooring, the seating, the walls. Our focus currently is really the rigging and lighting, so those stages are safe and can be used. We have a robust arts program, we want to make sure we're supporting that. If you look at our total project cost for our schools, Clinton Elementary, you're looking at about $24.5 million. Again, to the right, you'll see some highlighted for each of the schools, auditoriums, learning spaces for Clinton. Columbia High School, $138,673,438. Again, learning spaces, hallways and corridors are a big one. Also our arts departments like the music labs. And also, as we noted, the replacement and renovation of our plumbing. Delia Bolden, you're looking at about $27 million. Again, you'll see auditorium as a theme and also media center, classrooms and corridors. Marshall, you're looking at close to $25 million. You're looking at again, gym, media center, classrooms, corridors, auditorium. Maplewood Middle School comes in at about around $45 million. Classrooms, corridors, oldest part of the building renovation as well. Montrose, you're looking at about $13.5 million, auditorium and restrooms. I do want to point out, as I pointed out previously, we are not spending this money that I am going over right now. That is not what a long-range facility plan is. It's just charting out possible expenses moving forward, specifically dealing with our facilities. We have to make a choice as a district and as a community, what projects we want to prioritize and then balance that with our budget. And as you all know, after this last budget year, budget's gonna be very tight over the next three to five years. You have read the headlines in regards to whether it's West Orange, East Orange, Montclair, the many, many cuts that are going on in those school districts. I am extremely proud to cite that we had no reductions in force in South Orange Maplewood School District. We did a zero-based budget. The board was extremely supportive, our business department really worked their heinies off. I want to give a big shout out to our Budget Advisory Council Committee that also really helped us develop this budget. But it's gonna be very lean years over the next three to five years unless something changes at the state level. South Mountain Annex, we're looking at about $5,700,000. Big projects there are upgrading or renovating the restrooms. Seth Boydin, you're looking at close to $22 million. Again, classrooms and corridors, auditorium. Parking lot at Seth Boydin needs work and as well as the restrooms. South Mountain, you're looking at about $11.5 million, classrooms and corridors and auditorium. South Orange Middle School, you're looking at $70 million. Big ticket item there are the lockers, similar to Columbia High School. Also the classroom and corridors, parking lot as well, needs a lot of work and our restrooms. And also Tuscan Elementary at about $18.5 million. Again, you're seeing the same themes, classroom and corridors, media center, restrooms and auditorium. Central Office, which is the building we are currently sitting in, you're looking at close to $14 million of work needed. A lot of that is around accessibility and fire safety. And then at Underhill, you're looking at $7,764,000. The track needs to be resurfaced. We need to upgrade the complex and its fitness center as well. Also a lot of grounds work at Underhill. District-wide, if we're totaling the five-year long-range facility plan, we're looking at about $423,255,000. Again, I do want to go back to the main slide here, which is very important. This long-range facility plan does not trigger any large expenses or projects. It is a five-year plan. It is a map that we will continue to look at and continue to update and continue to balance with our budget to see what we need to prioritize in regards to student and staff safety, obviously that's going to be first. Questions for me around the long-range facility plan?
Okay.
Jeff, Virginia, and then Jeff?
Thank you for this. Question on the timeline for Ritzer. I am a very visual person and there's multiple pathways right now that are running parallel to each other. So I think the one question I'm gonna ask now and then the rest is kind of more for future FFT is trying to understand, you talked about the board voting on a new resolution. It's not on here, where does that fit in?
This is all triggered by the BOC's approving.
Right.
And then that's when the timeline starts.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I think, I mean, this is just kind of how my brain works, you know, from a project management perspective. There's always those colored timelines that kind of overlap and
Todd is working on one currently.
That would be really helpful.
He's working on one currently.
I think for everybody, because there's a lot on this and within the presentation. And then I think, I had already spoken to Bill about this as FFT Chair, but just ensuring that this is on as a standing item for FFT, just moving forward.
Also, as you recall, we plan on having a community action committee also oversee the project as we move forward as an advisory group.
Thank you.
I just kind of have an overall point and then a question on a different topic. I think when the Board of Ed worked on the last LRFP back in 2018 and 2019, like a major theme was that the district's enrollment had grown by I think about 900 students over the previous decade. And you had hundreds of students in trailers, which is not a very comfortable space. So like the theme of like working on the last LRFP was how do we accommodate all these new students we have? And if you look at it today, like the situation's the opposite. Like the projections that you just gave us actually show us falling to under 6,200 students, which would be like the fewest students we've had since I think like the first decade of this century. I don't think our enrollment will fall that much, but it will fall. And you know, we are a bit actually like overhoused in a way. So something I think like the board and the district should consider actually is like how to adapt to shrinking enrollment. I think like, you know, the most common sense thing to do is actually to try to move some pre-K into our elementary schools. We might get a better geographic coverage of the town if we do that. That's just like my point, I wanted to point out to the public. My question is, when I look at the costs of the individual projects here, they're very expensive. Like renovating a classroom costs as much as a nice house. Like improving drainage costs as much as a mansion. Like, would you admit that like, I know we have to do this, like you're not making anything up. I know how much public sector construction costs. Like, would you agree that like, we are spending a whole lot of money, like for this, much more money than the private sector would spend? And why is our construction so expensive?
Well, that, we have a accounting system called the GAAP system, which no other industry utilizes except the education system. I'll let Mr. Moody go a little deeper into that, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to jump in with that. I would actually comment more on the requirements of open, public and fair purchasing, right? We have to engage in a process that is competitive and open. And so, in so doing, we're at the mercy of the folks that come to submit their bids. And you know, it is actually important that we engage in this process in an open, public and a fair way, but it can make for some more expensive costs. Now, talking about what Superintendent Bing is speaking about, we do have a GAAP-based accounting system. That's standard actually in corporate and in public entities, but it's a unique kind of GAAP that's applicable specifically to school districts. But, so yeah, we're at the mercy of the contractors. They've come and actually provide the bids for the work done. And also there's increasing material costs and supply chain issues and things of that nature, so.
And we've been in discussions, Jeff, to really start trying to leverage our foundations a little better because they could make purchases at about probably a 50% less price than we would be paying for. So that's the work we're currently doing to try, you know, things like supplies or music instruments, really going through them, let them making the purchase, making a donation to us because they can get it such, so substantially less than us. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of the items that comes with being a steward of the taxpayer dollar. It's making sure everything's transparent and in the public.
I had a follow-up based on Board Member Bennett's question. So we have had conversations in FFT about the potential to use some of our existing elementary school spaces. I know we had discussed the annex at one point, but that does require quite a bit of work because there's regulations around what you need to have available in a pre-K classroom. So I guess what is, you know, the exploratory or phase that you're in regarding those considerations? Thinking about this as a five-year plan, where our enrollment stands? Is that something we are seriously considering? And if so, is that something we might consider making an adjustment to this current plan to reflect?
So we did our building walkthroughs last year with the architect and we did them again in June, literally with a page counting classrooms. We found one to two buildings that would really be nice for pre-K programming. And also their locations would really be perfect for pre-K programming. So we're having our first meetings with those principals next week. We've had preliminary discussions with them last, last week because they just got back. We're gonna start formal discussions with them next week.
All right, I'm up, okay. I had a follow-up too. I know we had talked a bit about playgrounds in the context of some of our elementary schools and also accessibility. So just wanted to see, are we considering any playground features that would support a wider range of needs? If you go to most of our playgrounds? I don't know that we have equipment that's designed for students with mobility challenges or those tools like communication boards for some of our non-speaking or students who have alternative forms of communication? Are those things that we would consider including in the plans for those playgrounds?
You just threw a softball, the principal Melissa Butler, she was here. She'd be talking for the next hour, yes.
That's great.
We've been working with Melissa around that exactly. And then using that model throughout other schools as well.
It's great to hear, thank you.
Okay, that's it then, thank you so much, Mr. Bing.
Okay, so I will read the Board President update, following with the President's statement and then Public Speaks, which I know many of you are excited for. So, "The Board had a busy August with a second retreat to discuss board and district goals, which will be finalized between now and the September 25th board meeting, during which we will vote on them. We are also awaiting a contract from NJSPA to work with them to produce our strategic five-year plan for the school district. This will be an integral tool that will define our district's future and I look forward to the process beginning with the board, our superintendent, school leaders and our community. Speaking of contracts, I'm pleased to share that the board will be voting on the Association of Supervisors, Coordinators and Administrators, aka ASCA, contract, which was ratified by ASCA members on Tuesday, August 26th, as our superintendent shared earlier. Reaching this agreement provides important stability for our district and ensures that our supervisors, administrators and coordinators are recognized and fairly compensated for the vital work they do every day. These contracts strengthen a supportive and collaborative working environment, which is key to maintaining the high-quality education our students deserve. I want to extend sincere appreciation to both the ASCA negotiating team and our team for their commitment throughout this process. Tonight, the board is also voting on our district's long-range facility plan, as our superintendent just presented, which is essential to ensuring we align with the New Jersey Department of Education's mandate to update facility needs, enrollment projections, building capacities and building conditions at least once every five years." I'm going to reiterate what Superintendent Bing said because in my world and marketing, you have to say it five to seven times before people actually listen or take action. So, with that said, Superintendent Bing has been evaluating the needs of our school district with key stakeholders since he joined us last year to create a list of priorities, which were initially shared publicly in April 2025 during our Board of School Estimate meeting. By approving this plan, we also enable continuity in scheduling capital projects and securing necessary state approvals. The LRFP serves as the universe of identified needs, but as he stated previously, it does not mean that every item on the list will get done. The actual projects that are implemented depend on a variety of things, such as board priorities, available funding, state approvals and Board of School Estimate action. Lastly, Policies 5120, 5124 and 9120 are up for vote tonight and are especially important to me as Board President. Policy 9120 ensures fairness in elections by preventing sitting board members from using school resources for personal campaign advantage beyond what is required and typical for board service. Policies 5120 and 5124 protect the integrity of our intentional integration plan while also giving families facing real hardships a pathway to request student transfers in a way that is ACS-neutral to sustain integration. Looking ahead, revising the current regulation and rubric for Policy 5124 will be a critical step toward creating transparency and accountability to the transfer process for both the board and our community. Now I'll read the Board President's statement. "The school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, it has thoroughly been reviewed by the administration, the superintendent of schools and the Board of Education, after which it is placed on the agenda for board discussion and action at a public meeting. Hearing of individuals and delegations. Thank you for coming in person and joining us online this evening. The South Orange Maplewood Board of Education values public involvement and respects that you've taken the time to address the board at tonight's meeting. As this is the board's business meeting, a friendly reminder to please be respectful as we take into consideration your valuable input, which will inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committees. The board does have time limits by policy and it will be enforcing those to enable as many people to speak as possible this evening. Each individual will be given three minutes to speak." Let's check and make sure, actually.
You're right at 20.
Right at 20, okay. So, please remember to say your full name and town where you reside. Oh, sorry. The first public comment period is usually limited to one hour with priority given to items related to the meeting agenda, meeting things that we are voting on tonight. And the second public comment period may be limited to 30 minutes. Please remember to say your full name and towns where you reside before you do your public speak. And now I will look at who's first on the list, which is... Are you, are you Tom Giblin? Yes, okay. Would you like to slide or have the mic slide over? Thank you so much.
Is that all right? Good evening, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to address the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education and to Superintendent Bing. You certainly have plenty of work to do and I appreciate what you do on behalf of the students in the school system and I know the residents of the surrounding communities appreciate your volunteerism. I'm here as the Business Manager of Local 68 International Union of Operating Engineers. My name is Thomas P. Giblin. I live in Montclair, New Jersey. Our union's office is in West Caldwell and Atlantic City, New Jersey. I'm here as the bargaining representative for the paraprofessionals who work for your subcontractor, ESS, that you engaged sometime back through a competitive bid. The board made a decision, I guess about 10 years ago, to subcontract the paraprofessionals. Since that period of time, there's been several different vendors that you've utilized. Currently it's ESS. There are over 200 paraprofessionals presently working for ESS. Their pay range annually is somewhere in the vicinity of about $26,000 to about $30,000. I know the original decision of the board was to reduce costs. I think you've more than reduced costs, you've cut into the bones, so to speak, financially and it's affected the morale of the paraprofessionals. They don't receive compensation for holidays. They are not in any state pension plan. And they really in line with what was approved several months ago. The board come up with a recommendation as far as paraprofessionals one and paraprofessionals two, as far as their hourly compensation is concerned. The vendor, ESS, is offering wages for the upcoming school year at a lower rate than what had previously existed in the prior school year. This is very detrimental. It will result in additional turnover because people will be simply forced It will result in additional turnover because people will be simply forced to go somewhere else to maintain a decent standard of their livelihood. We know that exists a bond between the students and the para-professionals. You know, it's important for their benefit, and I know that their parents and guardians also are pretty much satisfied as far as that's concerned. You know, we have a job to do as far as our union responsibilities, you know, trying to make sure that the para-professionals are receiving a combined compensation that's close to what other surrounding areas are getting. Some school districts in the immediate areas are still working directly for the Board of Education. I know that to go back to that method might be cost prohibitive, but we ask you to look at the original amounts.
Thank you, Tom. I just want to know you're at time, but I'd like to let you finish.
Okay. The original amounts that you had put out in your agenda a couple of months ago and make sure that the same employees get an adequate salary increase and, you know, get as much as they can to improve their morale and be 100% productive for the interests of the students in the South Orange Maplewood School District.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have Mary Paul.
Um, yes. Good evening, board members, board president, and also good evening, Superintendent Bing. My name is Marie Paul Florstol, and I serve as a business agent for para-professional represented by I U O E Local 68 in the South Orange Maplewood School District. Local 68 has proudly represented these dedicated employees since 2016. Para-professionals are the backbones of special needs classroom. Their support enables teachers to effectively manage classrooms and provide students with the instruction and the attention they need. Yet, despite their vital role, para-professionals' contribution are often under-valued and overlooked. When the district seeks to balance its budget, para-professionals are among the first to be targeted. Unlike many other staff, they do not receive paid holidays, spring break, or recess period, nor do they receive health benefits or retirement contribution. At the same time, as cost of living continues to rise, the contractor providing the para-professional services has cut their hourly wage even while the district has increased the contractor's hourly rate by approximately $33. These cuts directly harm the para-professionals and their families while allowing contractors to profit from their hard work. This is unacceptable. You know, just take a look at these people in the back, and who do you see? These are the people, these are the, you know, the para-professionals. They are dedicated workers, and yet, these contractors of ESS want to profit off their hard work. Additionally, last school year, the district reduced para-professional hours, which created serious challenges. Many students rely on buses that frequently arrive late, yet para-professionals are required to leave at 2:28 PM. As a result, children are often left without adequate supervision, placing both students and staff in unsafe position. Para-professionals deserve respect, fair compensation, and the security needed to continue supporting our most vulnerable students. I urge you to recognize the gravity of these issues and take immediate steps to ensure that para-professionals are treated fairly and that the well-being of our students remain the district's top priority. I thank you for your attention and support in this critical matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Lewis. Is Lisa Lewis here still?
Yes, I'll give my time to Local 68.
We cannot, unfortunately, that's not allowed. So, if you'd like to come up and speak, you can speak.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Next, we have Eva Vosieck. Eva?
Yeah, I was told it was my name, but I didn't know I needed to speak.
Okay, that's okay, Eva. Thank you for coming here. Sarah Castano. Okay.
Sarah.
Yeah, okay. Janice Thomas Ferreira.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Thank you.
Another para-professional here.
Yeah. Well, she's a whole lot of trouble.
Good evening. I'm Janice Thomas Ferreira. I'm here representing myself and joining with my colleagues to express discontent about the decrease, about the decrease in wages and the motion in job status. It's a shame that we exert all of our energy into our job but don't receive recognition. To add more insult to injury, the email states, "Total compensation, $24.79 an hour. Positions, title, para one. We are all demoted. All pay is decreased. How can we maintain our families? And the economic situation is rising. Many para-professionals have been here multiple years, and pay rates should move every year. Para tools employed in that position because of a degree should not enjoy more pay than para ones who have been on the job years and perform exemplary well. Para ones should move up and receive higher pay since their performance speaks for itself. Withstanding all of above, there needs to be an increase in wages accordingly across the board." Thank you.
Shauna Wilson? Victoria Bond?
My name is Vicki Bond. I live in South Orange. My son, who has autism, will be a fifth grader at Delia Bolden next week. He's benefited from both classroom and one-to-one paras outstanding among them, Ms. Jackie at Marshall and Mr. Kai at Delia Bolden. And that's why I'm here tonight, to speak about our para-professionals. When their pay is cut, it's not just a budget line that's trimmed. The very support that allows teachers to teach and children to learn is weakened. SOMA families with special education students care deeply about our paras, not just the support they give our children, but their own well-being and their family's well-being. Their livelihoods being threatened matters to us because they are lifelines for many children like mine receiving special education services. And this cut doesn't save money. It costs paras and the children they serve. Underpaying experienced paras drives turnover. Every time a para leaves, it costs student consistency and classroom stability. When we fail to value experience, our students pay the price. I don't know what ESS's contracts look like in other districts, but why is ours letting them run the table by proposing to pay the very staff who matter most to disabled kids less? But here's the opportunity. This board can stand up for paras who are being devalued and bullied by this cut. Helping to reinstate fair pay is proof of budgetary insight, foresight, the ability to see that human value not churn is what sustains a district. In the long run, this decision won't be remembered as a budget line. It will be remembered as the moment you put children's learning and the dignity of those who support them last or first. Do the right thing!
Thank you. Beth Cosentino.
Hello, I'm Beth Cosentino. I live in Maplewood. I have two children in the school district. Both will be at Maplewood Middle School this year. My son is an eighth grader, and my daughter is a sixth grader. Since February 2017, when my daughter started at Montrose Early Childhood Center, she has required a para-professional to help her get through her day. Next week, when she goes to her first day of middle school, she'll be introduced to a para whom she's never met before, who will be tasked with escorting her around the building, keeping her on task, morally supporting her, and keeping her from running down the hallways looking for a way out of school when she ultimately will want to leave and go home. Middle school can be frightening for any student, but my daughter isn't any student. She requires a level of support that comes from years of experience and training, which is what her previous paras in preschool and elementary school had. They were all designated Level 2 paras, meaning they were paid a higher rate thanks to their education and experience. This year, there are no designated Level 2 paras, even though paras who have been here for years and were previously Level 2. But as of last week, they received a letter to tell them that they are now Level 1, and all paras will be paid at the same lower-level, Level 1 rate. It clearly states in last year's 2023 letter to them, 2324 letter, title, Level 2 para. But this year's letter says, title, Level 1 para. There's no explanation given. That raises a lot of questions in my mind. I have personally reached out to ESS and asked them to shed some light on why the change, and I've asked if this is happening in other school districts they provide paras to, and I've received no response. So, I'm here tonight to request that you all reach out and try to get some answers. My daughter and many other disabled students in our district have it in their individualized education programs that there will be school personnel, including para-professionals, who will be trained specifically for their disability. If ESS doesn't provide them with the appropriate pay, they will leave, and the district will continue to be responsible to uphold the law by providing well-trained professionals for the students that need it. Thank you.
Jocelyn Ryan.
Hi, Jocelyn Ryan, South Orange and South Orange Maplewood Community Coalition and Race Schools Committee. As you know, because I've written to all of you, we have issues with the transfer policy, and thanks to those of you who have reached out to talk since then. I know it's up for second read, and it's going to go ahead tonight, but my last remaining concern, I guess, is that when parent choice is increased in transfer policies, typically what ends up happening is that a school that parents request into becomes known as a good school, and good is typically synonymous with white. And I worry that that will happen in the future. I know it's not happening now. I know that our transfer requests have all been so far to the closest school, but I worry that that will happen in the future, and I would ask you to consider, instead of transferring to a school, that you allow people to transfer from a school for a reason. And the request that we grant is to address that hardship, whatever that may be, and not to give people their choice of school. Also, just very briefly, on the athletic competition policy you have, are things for First Street tonight? I'm not sure. But in that policy and in any policy where it is possible, I would ask that we always include language that says, "No student athlete will be prohibited from participating or competing due to financial inability to pay dues, uniforms, whatever that reason may be." And on our paras, we talk a lot as a community and a school district about the importance and the need for hiring and retaining teachers of color, and that's been a struggle for us forever. Our numbers of teachers of color are still really low. We also talk a lot about the importance for our kids of racial mirrors, of adults who look like them, of trusted adults in classrooms and in school buildings. And the biggest number of adults of color we have are our paras in our schools, and they are our kids' racial mirrors. They are the role models. They are the racial mirrors. They are the trusted adults in many, many, many cases. And if we are not going to bat for them with ESS, then we are not who we claim to be. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deirdre Ayers. I live in South Orange and have been a member of this community for over 14 years. I am here today on behalf of the CHS Boys Basketball Booster Club because it has come to our attention that the SOMSD BOE, specifically the Finance Committee, denied the incredible donation opportunity from NBA player Kyrie Irving to provide both our girls' and boys' basketball teams with merchandise for the upcoming season. As a parent of a boys' basketball athlete and co-lead of the CHS Boys Basketball Booster Club, I'd like to understand a few things. Why was this donation denied? Did you reach out to any members of the basketball or Jewish community to come to your decision? Why did one committee and not the whole BOE get to make this decision? Over the last 24 hours since I heard this disappointing news, I have conducted my own small focus group outreach. I have reached out to both the CHS basketball and Jewish community, here in SOMA, and the Jewish community at large. And do you know what I heard? Initially, the take on Kyrie isn't great, but once they hear what he is offering and are reminded of the fact he apologized for his actions and words, they are more curious as to why our school board wouldn't be looking to offer a second chance or at least bring this decision to public discussion, why the BOE wouldn't be open to a local community member learning from his past mistakes and doing a social good to make amends. The Jewish community has, in fact, reminded me that their faith is based on atonement and second chances. Just Google what the upcoming High Holidays are about that this district recognizes and celebrates. In addition to what I stated above, the decision is also perplexing, given the incredible lack of funding that our sports teams get from the SOMSD budget and CHS specifically. Our understanding is that the CHS basketball team has just $2,500 for the year, which, if you don't know, won't cover much. This leaves all funding having to come from our booster club, and right now, given we pay for fall leagues, the end-of-year banquet, senior night, food for away games, any fees that lower-income families cannot afford, and merchandise, we are likely looking at maybe getting only the varsity team a warm-up jersey if we are lucky. But what's really disappointing is the lack of transparency. By having these types of closed-door meetings where decisions are made without speaking with the community, it impacts, where we have to find out through here's- where we have to find out through hearsay that decisions are being made with no actual community input, imagine what that is teaching and showing our kids. So let's have the discussion. Let's make a well-informed decision that benefits the people that this is meant to benefit the most, the kids. This could be an incredible opportunity for our district, our school, and most importantly, our athletes. They are deserving of at least that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jessica Miller.
Good evening, Jessica Miller, South Orange. I want to begin by saying that certainly as customers of a very lucrative contract, we certainly have pull to demand what our paras deserve. And in regards to the long-range facilities plan, am I too loud? I'm sorry. Okay. What is the total for health and public safety improvements that are tied to code compliance? Last month, following the vote for Ritzer Field, a few board members spoke about the reasoning for their plan selection. However, not one person mentioned the price tag. The Ritzer plan has now ballooned from $2.2 million in 2019 to $5 million earlier this year, to $6.4 million in June, to now $7.4 million. And yet, according to the district's architects, they can't know the stormwater calculations until they dig the test pits to determine the depth of the water table. That sounds like Pandora's Box to me. On June 24th, the board also approved a $1.3 million change order for the Columbia High School Girls Locker Room, previously approved at a cost of $2.5 million. Asbestos abatement was mentioned, but it sure seems, given the age of Columbia High School and the six years of ongoing construction, that data should have been explored and known at the initial costing of the project so that stakeholders would know they were actually approving a $3.8 million girls' locker room renovation. Stakeholders have a right to well-considered estimates before approving funding. Many of Soma's stakeholders are increasingly concerned about the escalating costs of living. SOMSD's current debt is $190 million, nearly equal to the annual operating budget. That breaks down to a debt-to-student ratio of over 27,000 per student. That is double and triple that of neighboring districts. For comparison, Milburn is 11,000 and Livingston is 8.5,000 per student. Continuing to bond more and more funds without anything rolling off is not sustainable. Tonight, we heard a presentation of the Long Range Facilities Update detailing much of the work, much of the work that is ahead of us in the next five years. This plan was not posted ahead of the vote transparency. But I would ask you to consider the work ahead and the continued expansion of the Ritzer project. Careful decision-making is needed to balance safe facilities for our students with the affordability of the tax burden. Even non-fiscal conservatives have to be able to pay the tax bill.
Thank you. Next, we have Jane Conrad. And then we go on to online.
So I'm going to talk about Ritzer Field, of course. But I just wanted to say that education is about people, not stuff. And I hope you'll pay your paras fairly. The Word of Ed has never approached Ritzer Field by asking, how can we redesign this space in a way that will best serve the whole school community? It has been a process that has been reactive, not proactive, that has responded to only the athletic committee, community, and within that subgroup, only those athletes that play extracurricular field sports. And within that subgroup, there are only four CHS teams plus marching band that regularly practice and play on Ritzer. It's a process that is never seriously considered just taking better care of Ritzer's grass, at least by a hose, so we can water the field. This process is not being driven by demands from FISED students. If you look at what FISED students really want, which you can tell by looking at class enrollments for the last 30 years or more, it's Project Adventure, more Project Adventure. Columbia's Project Adventure has a national profile, covered by CBS News when it was refurbished in 2012 as the most elaborate course of any public high school in the country. In the words of a former superintendent, "On Project Adventure, students work together to foster communication, decision-making, risk-taking, trust, and teamwork." This is an amazing opportunity for our students to develop the attributes that they need to be successful in college and career and in life. That's what students want. And yet, in this turfing frenzy, Project Adventure has been an afterthought. You didn't notice that a whole section of the course was there until we pointed it out. Plan D's design clearly shows a chain-link fence will chop through the center of the low ropes course. Some of it will be moved. Where? We don't know. Not important, apparently. The zipline is Project Adventure's culminating activity. Instead of flying across the field to the oldest, grandest tree on the campus, Plan D shows that, once you chop down some trees, kids will fly a shorter distance behind a chain-link fence. Not the same feeling. A second consideration, which this turfing frenzy has obscured, in this community, which is famous for the performing arts, perhaps it would be wise to preserve some outdoor performance space. Not talking about anything fancy, all that is needed is a large enough grassy lawn. There are many more kids in the performing arts at CHS than play field sports. Even when the auditoriums have been fully functional...
Jane, I just want to let you know you're at time. Thank you. Do you want to just, last thought?
All right. With all the ensembles at CHS, there has never been enough space to rehearse or perform. And talk about fundraising opportunities, this community would turn out for a choice to sit on picnic blankets and watch outdoor Shakespeare or hear an outdoor concert.
Thank you so much, Jane.
One sentence?
Okay, perfect.
In conclusion, grass fields are flexible in ways that turf fields are not. Please revisit this design and this time, consider the whole community.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going online and we have Jonathan Castro. If he's... Okay, great. Come on down.
Well, my name is Jonathan Castro. I am a proud Latino, father of two kids in this district, both attending Setboard and Elementary this fall. My initial intent was simply to come and ask the board to compare the district to fulfill its legal obligation by issuing the legally required prior written notices for two independent evaluations that we requested. One on February 28 and one on July 23. The district has ignored both of them, one of them for over five months. So over the weekend, this situation seems to have escalated. On Saturday, August 23, around 1:30 a.m., our family received a series of frontline documents from the district, including a two-year-old blank timesheet from a caseworker who was on vacation and that we have been repeatedly told she is no longer involved in her son's case since February. These documents and the circumstances surrounding them seem to be designed to retroactively create a paper trail. On August 14, a federal judge issued a settlement establishing that the state and by extension, this school district cannot use creative interpretations to circumvent the spirit of special education law. This means that the legal loopholes that are being used to avoid our children's state-provision provisions and treat IEEs as re-referrals, as new separate issues, are not just unethical, they are now in direct violation of federal court order. This is a powerful irrefutable indictment of the legal loopholes our family and many families in the special education system are enduring and continue to endure. For the last five months, we have been given evasive non-answers and contradictory falsehoods. Just this Tuesday, August 26, after we put the district on notice, when we sent an email that I'm sure you all received, we received an email, once again, avoiding providing that one single mandated document by law, a prior written notice. These emails is full of self-incriminating admissions. In one sentence, it claims that our son is declassified via settlement agreement, meaning we did not challenge it, and the case is now closed. In the next breath, it claims that the IEEs have been granted, which means that both these cases are ongoing and in open dispute. This is indefensible contradiction. And it puts our family in a legal limbo where for over five months, email after email, we're waiting for an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next, we have Aziza Alexander. Either here or online.
Hello. Hello. Yes, can you hear me? Yes, thanks. Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Aziza Alexander and I'm a resident of South Orange. I am also a parent of a player on the varsity basketball team and I'm the co-lead of the CHS Boys Basketball Booster Organization. South Orange and Maplewood, the South Orange and Maplewood community takes great pride in the diversity of ethnicities, religions, and thought in our community. And it's this commitment to inclusivity that has made South Orange Maplewood such a wonderful place, not only to grow up in, as I did, but also to raise my own children in today. It is because of these shared values and the importance of ensuring that every student has an equal opportunity to participate that I'm speaking today regarding the recent decision to decline a generous donation from Kyrie Irving to our basketball team. The costs associated with high school athletics can be significant. For a single season, sneakers alone can cost $100 to $150 per player. Warm-ups may run another $75 to $100. And jerseys can cost upwards of $100 per athlete. For many families, these expenses create a real financial burden and can even limit participation for some students. Though donation on the table would help to alleviate this burden, allowing students to fully engage in the basketball program without worrying about how to afford essential equipment. I also recognize that in this meeting, we've heard about pay increases needed for paraprofessionals, funds needed for long-range facility plans, and other initiatives requiring financial support. Given these discussions, it is perplexing to understand why such a beneficial donation was refused, especially when our athletics program operates on a dismally low budget. This rejection seems particularly concerning as it appears to have been made without open discussion or input from the community. In addition, I think this donation would directly benefit our student athletes who dedicate significant time and effort to representing our school and community by enhancing their experience, their pride in the program, and their ability to compete. I just want to say that the lack of dialogue is disappointing and in my opinion, another reason that the decision should be revisited. I strongly urge the board to reconsider the donation or to, at the very least, open it to broader transparent discussion that includes input from parents and the community. If accepted, the donation can and should be managed with full transparency, ensuring it aligns with the principles of our, the principles our community prizes. Our basketball program reflects values of diversity, respect, and those values will guide us in making the most of any generous support provided. I also want to stress that time is of the essence. Delaying this decision risks our student athletes missing out on this opportunity entirely, which would be especially unfortunate if the delay is avoidable. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Lindsey Stone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lindsey Stone. I am a resident of South Orange and I am the parent of a fifth grader at South Mountain. My son is autistic and has had the same one-to-one paraprofessional, Ms. Cunningham, since kindergarten, when his grades started elementary school virtually during the pandemic. In our district, where we experience a high amount of staff turnover and my son struggles with inconsistency, she has been his one steady source of support. She knows him better than anyone else in the building and her presence is what allows him to navigate and succeed in an inclusion class alongside his peers. Their relationship comes from years of her showing up, being patient, and building trust. Paraprofessionals like Ms. Cunningham are being told their pay is being cut. These are already some of the lowest-paid staff in our district and now they are expected to do this critical work for less money, no job security, no benefits, and a lack of recognition from the administration. The district says that this is between ESS and its employees, but let's be honest. ESS only has this power because the district outsourced these jobs years ago. The district can't wash its hands of its responsibility now. We rely on paraprofessionals every single day to support our most vulnerable learners, to keep classrooms running smoothly, and to ensure student safety. By standing by while ESS profits at the expense of its workers, the district is signaling that paraprofessionals and by extension, the children they serve are not a priority. That is unacceptable. Allowing these cuts to stand is a choice. And it tells families like mine that our kids and the people who support them most don't matter. I urge the board and the administration to intervene immediately, to demand accountability from ESS, to give the paraprofessionals the raise that they are entitled to and to explore bringing paras back in-house where they belong. Our children cannot thrive without them and our community cannot stand by while they are disrespected and underpaid for their essential work. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Next, we have Virginia Lamb. And then only one more after that.
Sorry, hi. Virginia Lamb, Maplewood resident. I'm here to speak about Ritzer Field, but I just did want to say that I do remember the days when paras were in-house and it was a completely different climate in the classroom. It was a different kind of community and it was a much better time, I can say. Anyway, I recently read an article in the News Record. It was entitled "Coaches' Rave About Ritzer Field Upgrades." And one of the tiny paragraphs said, "The plan for the new turf field has met with opposition from some residents who cited environmental issues, including plastic draining into the water supply, a lack of permeability contributed to local flooding, loss of natural green space, and the need to replace a turf field at the end of its lifespan." Each of these items are critically important and yet, they're being framed as the complaints of a few cranky tree huggers. A plastic turf field will have negative impacts on the public and environmental health long into our future. These very real impacts have been documented by scientific experts and are being stifled by the turf industry, which is suing experts for speaking up. The News Record article talks extensively about how amazing the new turf field configuration will be, but it completely ignores the fact that a quote "world-class sports complex can be achieved with grass." It's not plastic surface-dependent. And as you've heard from many of the members of the community, not just a few, and yet continue to ignore, grass would have many positive benefits. A cooler surface, water percolation, storage, flooding mitigation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And most notably, no plastic toxic exposure to students or the environment. And it would not cost anywhere near the outrageous sum of money being proposed for this field. This is money our community cannot afford. Lastly, the fact that the long-range facility plan is... priorities and needs of the general public should be considered, since in Maplewood, 56.5% of our property taxes go to the district. I'm astounded by the dollar amounts itemized here tonight, and I urge you to use common sense when it comes to this field. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Final public speaks is Kevin Philammon.
That committee member is not online.
Okay, so then that completes public speaks for this portion. We will now move on to committee report-outs. We'll start from this side. Thank you.
Those attending for the board were President DeVal Wilson, Second Vice President Eckert, Board Member Sackett Gabel, and myself. Those attending from the administration were Mr. Bing, Dr. Gilbert, and Dr. Wabell. Among the issues discussed in committee were the following: III transfer requests and Policy 5124. The district presented information on transfer requests and decisions as of mid-August. When making decisions, the district placed hardships into two priorities. Priority one are hardships the district was considering prior to conversations with the board about updating Policy 5124. These include, for example, house fire, serious illness in the family, and military service circumstances. Priority two hardships include, for example, transportation difficulties, childcare difficulties, and distance to school, among others. There were four categories of decisions made with regard to transfer requests this year and letters sent to parents. The first category is approved, which meant that a family met priority one hardship criteria and were transferred. These families were sent a letter indicating approval. The second category is that a family met priority one hardship criteria, but because of class size capacity and there was no tier-to-tier match, they were placed on a waiting list. Tier-to-tier match means that another student of the same socioeconomic status is requesting the opposite transfer so that the match can be made without exceeding the 5% variance limitation. These families were sent a letter saying that they met the criteria, but the school was at capacity, so they were placed on a waiting list. The third category were families that met priority two hardship criteria, but again, no tier-to-tier match, so they were placed on a waiting list. These families were sent a letter saying that they met the criteria, but the school was at capacity, so they were placed on a waiting list. And then lastly, the fourth category was denied. The family did not meet the hardship criteria, though they are automatically placed on a waiting list. These families were sent a letter indicating denial. As more transfer requests come in, the district will continue to see if they can make more tier-to-tier matches using the waiting list. The waiting list order will be, one, those that meet priority one hardship; two, those that meet priority two hardship with distance to school, so those that are more than 2.5 miles away, a priority within that group; and then three, those that did not meet the Requests can be ongoing from families, especially because the district has a number of new families registering now. Typically, requests stop in October. And in terms of reviewing the request, Dr. Wabell leads a hardship review committee, then the decision goes to Dr. Wilbert and then Mr. Bing, so there are several people that review the request. The second topic discussed was continued review of the III. The district provided updated information from our consultant, the ALVES Group. The ALVES Group modeled changes in variance. They found that there was not a great difference in the number of students getting first, second, et cetera, placement of schools. There was not a different, great difference in racial balance or in distance to school between 5, 7.5, and 10% variance. The district will continue to review these data. It was also discussed that the district is working with ALVES to look at the SES tiers. For the tiers, the district will confirm when updated ACS data are available. When dividing families into the tiers, so families are placed into low, medium, and high tiers, the district is simply breaking them into thirds. So a low SES tier in our towns does not necessarily equate to low income. The district will talk to ALVES about this and possible other approaches, especially taking into account our town's changing demographics. When using the older data, there has been correlation between SES, tier, and race. As there is new ACS data, it will be important to examine if this correlation remains or changes. ALVES provided preliminary data on initial kindergarten placements for 25, 26 school year. ALVES compared placements using the original or random number approach that we had been using prior to this year in our algorithm versus our new proximity placement approach. And they looked at data as of May, so that is preliminary data. With the new proximity approach, there was a 5% increase in students who received their first or second closest school, but there was also a 6% increase in those that were assigned their sixth closest school, so their furthest school, which was especially the case for South Mountain students. South Mountain students this year had a reduction in kindergarten class, so they are offering three kindergartens this year, and they were also added as a multilingual language hub and had added an inclusion class. So as a result of that, there were only 12 kindergarten slots available using the algorithm for placements, so a number of those families were placed at their furthest school. The district is trying to have all schools have 25 sections for efficient use of teachers' time, so that is why South Mountain lost a kindergarten class. South Mountain will still not be at 25 sections, so the 26, 27 school year, the district also anticipates South Mountain having three kindergarten classes to right-size. Finally, there was discussion that the district will present on the III and its evaluation of it sometime in the fall. The district is still working through modeling with ALVES. Separately, with regard to the Rutgers recommendations, the district was to present on those today, but that presentation has been pushed to September, the September Public Board of Education meeting, so that should occur then. Lastly, the district provided an update on meeting with Judge Wallace, which occurred on July 30th. During that meeting, it was discussed how the district can make some modifications to the recommendation tracker to more simply indicate how close a recommendation is to completion and related timeframes, as that would be helpful for the judge and Dr. Fergus to see progress. There are a number of recommendations that have been or are, that have been or are being addressed, and by updating the tracker, hopefully, the district can show this, can better show this. And that was, that's a recap of the discussion. Our next committee meeting will be on October 8th. There is more detail on our committee discussion in the written notes, so please go to the district website for a full recap of the meeting in the board committees section. Does anyone have any questions?
I appreciate, oh gosh, I'm loud, sorry. With regard to the 5124, I appreciate getting a clear understanding of how they're being evaluated as we try to phase in those new parameters. Do we have a sense of when the regulation and then that corresponding hardship rubric would be disseminated?
No, I, right, but I'm just thinking, like, it sounds like they've got a handle on how they're doing it, so seemingly, they're not working off of blank papers, so just curious when we might all see that work.
Okay, but what, can the full board see kind of what you're operating off of? Because seemingly, that was reviewed. It would be helpful for all of us to have that.
Yeah, we didn't look at it. They just told us.
Okay, but I would assume they probably have something written down that we could look at preliminarily.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And also, there was data that was referenced that you all were looking at, that Dr. Gilbert had sent and that has not been sent around yet. Do we have any sense of when that will be sent to the full board for review?
He, I asked him again today, and he said he should have it to the board, the full board on Friday, tomorrow.
Okay.
And I guess, and part of the policy is that the district is to update the website within a certain amount of time to explain all of this as well, so I think that naturally will happen.
Sorry. The Personnel Committee met on Monday, August 25th at 6:30 PM. In attendance were Board Members Sackett Gabel, Gifford, and myself, along with Mr. Bing and Mr. Adidoyan. Much of what was discussed is confidential, however, the public-facing minutes are on the district website. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. The district provided a general update on vacancies with some discussion around some of the recommendation on the resolution this evening. We did review the monthly data, and I wanted to pull out that as of August 20th, it was the lowest number of vacancies only a week out from the start of school in recent years, in part of, in part due to all the right-sizing work done by HR in the spring. As of 8/20, there was 13 total vacancies, two within special education, seven leave-replacement vacancies, three of which are special education. And just for reference, in late August of 2024, there were a total of 25 vacancies and 15 leave-replacement vacancies. So just a quick shout-out to, I don't, he might still be here, Mr. Adidoyan and his team, and all those involved in doing all that work in the spring. We discussed some of the updates from some of the 24, 25 personnel-related goals that are spilling over into the current school year. Of note, in September, there will be a meeting with internal stakeholders for a deeper analysis of the staff survey that was sent out last spring. This will help drive future priorities, including targeted marketing materials. And launching the affinity group program is still on track to kick off in the October, November timeframe. We closed off the meeting with a discussion on the proposed personnel-related district goal for 25, 26 school year. Committee provided feedback to the district, and as newly mentioned in our update, we will be voting on the goals that I think we need to narrow down a bit, but in our September meeting. The next committee meeting will be Monday, September 22nd at 6:30 PM. Any questions? Great, thank you.
I'm going to be doing double duty this evening. I'll discuss first the Policy and Governance Committee. The Policy and Governance Committee met on August 6th, and we have a few different policies stemming from that meeting that are on the agenda for passage tonight. On for second read, we have three policies: Policy 5120, Assignment of Students; Policy 5124, Internal Student Transfers; and Policy 9120, Public Relations Program. Those first two policies read together are what's been discussed in the prior committee minutes and in the board president's statement regarding changes to the ability of students to transfer between schools and the impact that can have to identify additional circumstances that can qualify as a hardship and specifying how students can move around in the district as long as they meet within the criteria, the variances that are in place for our intentional integration initiative. And those were discussed on first read last month. And Policy 9120 is being modified in the piece that discusses restrictions on mentions and depictions of sitting board members during elections to indicate a few expanded ways in which board members cannot access district communication except for items that are strictly within board business. We have a couple of policies that are on for first read this evening: Policy 5710 on student grievances. This is an expanded policy recommended by our vendor, Strauss Esme, that puts some more specific practices in place for when students can bring grievance and how they appeal that up the line. And our board is proposing a version that has more expanded timelines, the amount of time a student has to take appeals from what was in the proposed Strauss Esme version. Policy 2431 on athletic competition makes clear that as we look to expand our athletics into middle school, that students who are placed in out-of-district programs as well as homeschooled are able to have access to those as well, and structures that process to ensure that students have access to our athletic program. We also reviewed Policy Alerts 234 and 235 from Strauss Esme, a number of different policies there to update our policies in light of changes to state law. Those are currently in progress. We reconsidered Policy 8600. This is our transportation policy. It was going to be up for first read last month upon request from a couple of board members. It was brought back to committee for the question of whether a piece should be inserted into that policy that would eliminate courtesy transportation for pre-K students in the 26, 27 school year. That was handed off to the FFT Committee for further review. No specific recommendation to implement that was put in place at that time, and that policy has not yet been brought back up for a first read. And finally, the Policy and Governance Committee spent some time working on the development of certain board goals in preparation for our retreat, which happened last week. Any questions? Hearing none. I know. All right, you want, you have something? Think about it. All right. Exactly. Of how many? I'm going to now sit in for Board Member Bill Gifford, who is hopefully somewhere better than this. I love being here, though. The Finance Facilities and Technology Committee met on August 20th. First, the FFT Committee welcomed new team members: Assistant BA Tiffany Renaud and Facilities Director Henry Botiglieri. And I am sure I'm butchering both of those names, and we're going to get used to them. The committee reviewed the Long Range Facilities Planning Document, which listed projects, including both small repairs and major renovations, that we all saw an extensive presentation on tonight and was then reviewed in the meeting this evening. In parallel, we had to update our bond issuance request related to Ritzer and the middle school auditorium upgrades. An updated bond issuance request totaling approximately $9 million is needed in the Board of School estimate. The currently authorized $2.031 million that we currently have approval for debt service aid on is insufficient. Additional authorization is needed. The FFT also received a presentation from Athletic Director Winstead on a potential high school basketball sponsorship from the company Anta and its Kyrie Irving brand. The committee discussed the merits and implications of the proposal. The district is now following up with additional research and vetting. The committee and board will further consider the results at a later date once that process is concluded. Lastly, the committee covered future health benefits and insurance strategy. The state health plan cost increase is projected at 32% from around $20 million to around $27 million, which exceeds expectations. A potential self-insured plan is being evaluated with a projected increase of only 11.2%, bringing us to around $22 million, with a potential savings of around $5 million, including stop-loss measures and reinsurance to manage risk. Further discussion with brokers, the collective bargaining unit, and district leadership are planned to finalize this strategy. And the next FFT meeting will be on September 17th. Questions?
So just to clarify, I think especially for the public, there was no decision made on the high school basketball sponsorship, and the full board will have some, say, some discussion about that as a whole?
That is correct. There is no final determination's been made. It is currently being vetted further with additional discussions taking place internally.
Okay.
So I'm also doing double duty tonight. I am sharing this update from, on behalf of my colleague and CNI Chair, Board Member Sackett Gabel, for the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and share her sentiments. So while this committee did not meet this month, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the loss of our ELI supervisor, Dr. Jane Beanfolks. Dr. Beanfolks had a remarkable impact on readers and writers in our school, and her passion and leadership will be deeply missed. Her legacy will live on in the students and educators she inspired. As we look ahead, we're eager to continue our committee work next month with updates on the Freshman Academy, uplift program data, student pathways, and other exciting initiatives. These conversations will help us build on the strong foundation already in place and keep moving forward for the benefit of all students. I'm going to transition right into our Special Services Committee readout. We met on August 21st from 6:30 to roughly 8:15, but I admittedly didn't write it down. The Special Services Committee was myself, Board Members Meyer and Sackett Gabel, as well as Superintendent Ping and Ms. Jess Maria. We began with our CPAC check-in with CPAC President Nicole Josie. She cited that CPAC was encouraged by the communication around ESY this year, including clarity around who to contact over the summer and excitement about the progress on our standard operating procedures for the 504 process. This month, we discussed with CPAC the new New Jersey
This month, we discussed with CPAC the new New Jersey IEP law, which is intended to enhance IEP transparency by mandating that schools share key student information with parents at least two days before meetings. The district shared that it will be reviewed with case managers during pre-service, which was this week, and that they will use this year essentially as a pilot to address challenges before the full implementation is required in July 2026. CPAC and the district are partnering on disseminating that information to families. Ms. Jess Maria created a list of this year's requirements, and that will be shared by CPAC through a parent survey to distinguish between what is going to be legally required from any additional family requests that they might have in terms of what information would be helpful for them. Finally, CPAC and the district are also going to collaborate this school year to engage our twice-exceptional families, gaining a clearer understanding of their experiences and identifying areas of strength and opportunities for growth for these students and families. Next, the committee discussed our progress on our current district and committee goals, and we also reviewed potential goals for the upcoming school year, which included ideas to build on the collaboration between CNI and Special Services, which Ms. Bodnar spoke to earlier, in an effort to bolster our inclusion model and build capacity at the school level. Next, we discussed staffing. We're, to Board Member Eckert's point, we had the fewest vacancies that we've had in recent years, including on our Special Services team. There's currently looking for a BCBA or a Board Certified Behavior Analyst and for instructional leave replacements that need to be filled, with urgent positions likely to be supported through staffing from contracted providers. Next, we had a range of instructional updates, both academic intervention and EBR. So the district will be sending a communication about academic intervention or AI services ahead of the school year. To recap, our AI staff have been reassigned to existing vacancies. Our Title I schools, Clinton, Seth Boydin, MMS, and SOMs will retain their AI positions using those funds. Students at non-Title I schools who previously received academic intervention will now participate in small group instruction three times a week using the magnetic reading model. The upcoming communication will also provide additional details on the provision of supports with the goal of ensuring that all of our students receive the supports they need to succeed. Additionally, the Curriculum and Instruction and Special Services team collaborated to provide professional development on Orton-Gillingham to support intensive reading interventions, and our EBR services remain unchanged for students this year, though the staffing was reduced through schedule consolidation. As was touched upon earlier, our extended school year was incredibly successful. There was a ton of positive feedback received through CPAC. Notably, our progress reports, which had previously been a pain point, were described as both wonderful and informative. Almost finally, we had two middle school updates. So following discussions and a review of CPAC recommendations, the district is looking at how to better incorporate executive functioning skills within our middle schools. One of those steps is migrating fully to Google Classroom, as opposed to having multiple modalities that can make it challenging for not just our students, but often our families, to navigate through with assignments. Professional development was beginning this week for principals, continuing for teachers throughout the year, and counselors are reviewing lessons within Wayfinder, which is our SEL platform, and also adding a chapter on note-taking with new resources and support for eighth graders that over the next few years will flow down to seventh and sixth grade. Finally, in terms of instruction, Effective School Solutions, not the ESS that is this Hatch de Paris, Separate ESS, has expanded their contract to include SOMs for the 2025-2026 school year, and we look forward to what that support will do for our kids there. And then I did want to touch on paraprofessionals as well. So the district recognizes the vital role that our paraprofessionals play in supporting our students. Having started my career as a paraprofessional, I deeply understand the impact that those staff members have, and I'm sensitive to the importance of their work, as families and community members described tonight. We appreciate the advocacy and concerns that were expressed by CPAC and all of our community members and parents and caregivers this evening. So while the district, as noted, only negotiates with ASCA and SOMA, we are closely monitoring the situation between Local 68 and ESS and have engaged in contingency planning, and the district did meet with ESS on 8/25 to review next steps and get an update. Offer letters were to be signed by 8/26, and as of the last update, 193 of 195 paraprofessionals did sign. In an encouraging step, some of our district principals also invited those paraprofessionals to join and participate this week, though that was voluntary. And I also wanted to include that this committee, we, and the board, and the district are going to remain engaged and provide updates to the community as the situation develops, and additionally, that we have also begun discussing and evaluating the possibility, which was also raised by community members tonight, of bringing paraprofessionals back in-house as a first step consideration is being given, starting with paraprofessionals that are assigned to our self-contained classrooms, though this is still in an early and exploratory phase. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 10th. A full recap can be found on our website under the Board Committee section, and I am open for questions. Thank you.
Great, and good job, everyone. Oh, sorry, yes, go on, Ed.
Sorry for not saying this after the FFT update. It just took a little bit of time to absorb, but I think you said that our health insurance costs were increasing from $20 million to $27 million, a 30% increase approximately. We're not the only district going through that, but, you know, it's still a huge problem for us. You know, a lot of that increase can be offloaded onto the taxpayers, who are ourselves, of course, through the tax cap adjustment, but, you know, it's not free money, like, and it certainly, like, would offset our ability to, like, ask the Board of School Estimate for, you know, additional OpEx money, which we had considered, or even, like, it might even impair how much we can ask the BOSE for bonding money. Like, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but it is something that will definitely, like, crowd out, like, other things we need to do, like, even if it can partly be, you know, baked into the tax level increase for the next school year, so.
Thank you, Jeff. So now we will go to the action portion of the meeting, and first, we'll have our superintendent read the memorial resolution that is part of our voting agenda tonight for Dr. Beanfolks.
Thank you, Board President. So as part of 4837, the South Orange Maplewood School District Certification of Recognition and Memorial Tribute to Dr. Jane Beanfolks, colleague, friend, who we lost this month. Whereas the South Orange and Maplewood School District and the entire school community are profoundly saddened by the passing of Dr. Jane Beanfolks, who left us on August 11th, 2025, and whereas Dr. Jane Beanfolks dedicated six years to the students and staff of our district, serving with distinction as a supervisor of English and Language Arts, and whereas Dr. Jane Beanfolks was more than just a staff member. She was a beloved colleague, a mentor, and a friend, whose dedication and spirit touched the lives of countless individuals within our schools, and whereas her unwavering commitment to our students and their positive impact on our school community will be deeply missed and forever remembered. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the South Orange Maplewood School District Board of Education hereby recognizes and honors the legacy of Dr. Jane Beanfolks for her exceptional service and lasting contributions to our staff, students, and community. And be it further resolved that this resolution be adopted and entered into the official minutes of the Board of Education as a permanent tribute to her memory, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Dr. Jane Beanfolks as a token of our deepest sympathy and respect.
Thank you so much. Are there any severs before we begin? Yes?
I want to sever 4837F.
4837F. Okay, any others? Yep.
I'd like to sever 4843B.
4843B? Okay, no worries, I was making sure. Okay, so, Ms., we'll have him read the other resolutions into record, and then we'll have open discussion. Mr. Moody?
Yes, the resolutions presented for action, in this action, are 4837 through 4849, excluding 4837F and 4843D.
Okay, so just for all those others, any discussions, comments? Oh, yeah, thank you.
I'll just jump in for a moment to discuss a few of the things when we, we take these votes, we have so many different resolutions packed in, and I just want to highlight a few of the things in here that we haven't talked about so far. Resolution 4840Q notes a donation from the Achieve Foundation of $7,500. These funds are donations from the Nathan Cummings Foundation, made possible through the helpful donation, coordination of South Orange resident Laura Campos, as well as James Mano, our Supervisor of Fine Arts. The donation aims to support SOMSD Summer Music Enrichment Program. Resolution 4847 is a partnership with the Connect for Freedom nonprofit regarding human trafficking awareness and prevention training, which provides free professional development materials, lesson plans, parent presentations, and other resources, which are curated in the Department of Homeland Security's Blue Campaign in coordination with the National Centers for Missing and Exploited Children and aligned with New Jersey's student learning standards and state laws. And 4848, we are entering into a partnership with Rutgers University's Engaged Science, or CARES, program. This collaboration will provide our students with hands-on learning opportunities, exposure to Rutgers facility and labs, and pathways into STEM fields, while also supporting inclusive research that reflects the diverse experiences of our community. So, all great things.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to comment on 4840K, which is approving a contract withholding spaces to facilitate restorative practice, professional development for pre-K through eighth-grade teachers and the two, teachers and district administrators for the cost of $92,900. I think we, we all know that having restorative justice practice training in our district is important, and it is a priority. It wasn't our budget for fiscal year 2526. I just want to bring up the fact that it wasn't our budget for $60,000, not $92,900. I was told that we don't necessarily have to use all of this money. We can take out options from the contract to hopefully meet our budget, and/or there might be other pockets of PD we could pull from if indeed we do want to use all the fu, or spend all the funds that we have approved, we're approving here in this contract. But just given our budget situation, I want us to be just fiscally prudent and aware of kind of what we budgeted versus what this cost is, and be transparent about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Okay, let's vote.
Thank you for that. And so I'll conduct a vote on the other items in the consent board. Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford? Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Sackett Gabel? Right, we have it.
Okay, so then next, we'll do Policy 4837F, which is, excuse me, not policy, but resolution, and that is personnel, so we actually cannot discuss that publicly, so...
I'll just say that we discussed it where we could, and I think people understand.
Right, and exact, yes, exactly. So if there are no questions or clarifications needed, we can vote.
Okay, we'll proceed with the vote on Resolution 4837F.
This is not the vote on the sever itself, it's actual substance, right?
Yes.
Okay, just, sorry.
Okay, so we'll proceed on the vote for Resolution 4837F. Board Member Sackett Gabel? Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford? Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
No.
Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we have it.
Okay, great, and then the next one is 4834B, severed by Board Member Callahan. Would you like to speak?
I'll say something quickly, thank you. So I did, I voted no on first read for this, and I will be voting no on a second read of this policy, 5124, on hardships, because while I am not opposed to updating this policy, I just am not convinced that we took the most comprehensive or thoughtful approach in designing the policy. I was heartened to hear some of what the district developed. I just remain concerned that the draft broadens the definition of hardship in ways that could, especially in light of the potential increase in our variance number and other potential revisions to IIII that will be discussed at a later date, erode the goals of integration, if not now, over time. And I'm concerned that we're making significant potential changes without allowing sufficient time to evaluate the impact of each variable. So for those reasons, I'm voting no on that tonight. Thank you.
Okay, with no other comments, we will vote. Thank you.
All right, we'll proceed to vote on 4843B. Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
No.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford? Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Sackett Gabel? Okay.
Okay, that completes the action portion. I'm going to check online, we don't have any new public speaks there. Has anyone seen if they, you want to, okay. We'll check the...
No.
No? Nope? Okay, great, thank you. Board Member Eckert got some extra steps in. So next, we'll go to new business. Again, new business is for items that require immediate attention and a vote tonight. Are there any new business items? No? Okay. So then I will read future meetings and then adjournments. So the Board of Education will meet again in public session for our regular board meeting on Thursday, September 25th, 2025. Action will be taken, and now I will adjourn. Mr. Moody, I would now like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting on Thursday, August 28th, at 10:21 PM. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Eckert. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.